One.
Good afternoon, everyone. This is Sarah Jefferson, Mayor of High Point, convening a special meeting of the High Point City Council. Here with me in the room, we've got every member of council present. Say, Councilmember Johnson, who we expect to join us here soon. We've got one item on our agenda, and before getting to that, I'll ask if there's a motion to adopt our agenda.
So, second?
Motion's been made by Councilwoman Holmes, seconded by Councilwoman Cook. Any discussion on the motion to adopt? Hearing none. All those in favor of please sign the file by saying aye.
Aye.
Any against? Yeah, I said it, and we have our motion. Item 2025-341, we're going to be discussing Bloomberg Harvard City Leadership Initiative update. And prior to going to our Assistant City Manager, I'm actually going to pass it to Madam Manager, Tasha Lowenford.
Thank you all. Mayor members of council, this is an exciting opportunity for us. This is the second time the City of High Point has been able to participate in the Bloomberg Harvard City Initiative. The first time that we did this, Greg and I attended those sessions, and we had some members from community development. And out of that process, we were able to work through the idea of developing our shared use commercial kitchen project that is well underway and also has additional funding that was identified, federal funding, to help support that effort. So, we have a group of our talented City of High Point staff members that have been working through this process for the last year. And typically, you will hear from department directors or myself or assistant managers as we're walking through these briefings. But we're going to hear some new voices today from some of those team members that participated in the process. I'm really excited for them to be able to talk with you all directly about their work, working with community members to help refine some of these ideas. So, there are some new voices, new faces, but I think it's an opportunity for them to tell you firsthand what it was like to go through this process and how we got to the ideas that we're going to share with you today. So, with that, I will turn it over to Assistant Manager Almeida to introduce our project and our team that's here with us today.
Thank you, Madam Manager, Mayor, City Council. As the manager said, we are very happy to be at this point. We have put in a lot of time and effort, and it's been very valuable. It's been a growth opportunity for the entire team. I didn't want to start off by introducing the team, and we do have several members of the team here. First up, Jelani Biggs and myself were the senior leaders on the project. Our innovation lead was Meredith Martin, who's here, who you know. And our, Jelani was also our project manager. But as you know, Jelani and his family welcomed a new baby. And so, while he was out with that, we also had Carla Huggins step into that role very ably and spent a good bit of time filling in that void. And just FYI, Carla is also going to be a full-time employee. She will be our new budget analyst. So, congratulations to Carla. We also have Debbie Bragg on our team. Debbie's here. Melanie Bruton, Tyler Cole, raise your hand when I say your name. Bradley Kraft is in the back. Brian Fowler is here. Leslie Harrison from the library cannot be here. Jerome, I believe, was tied up in another meeting, and then Andy Piper. Now, we were very intentional about picking this team. We have members of this team who have been here for 20-plus years. We also have members of this team who have been here for a few years and some that are virtually brand-new. So, we were very intentional about that. Also, very intentional about picking folks from different departments, from, you know, wealth of different departments throughout the city. Just to go over the agenda, we're going to talk about the Bloomberg Innovation, kind of the process we went through, some of the concepts and next steps. So, kind of a little background. So, the Bloomberg Harvard City Leadership Initiative is an initiative that the mayor and the city were selected for. We were one of 40 cities from literally around the world. When you look at the list of cities, we have folks from Germany, Canada, Colombia, the Netherlands, Kenya in Africa, New Zealand, and Australia. So, it was pretty impressive to be on a phone call here in the United States at noon in our cohort center in New Zealand. It's the middle of the night for them. So, felt bad for them at some points. But it was a year-long initiative, and we focused on a key city priority. And so, the mayor selected this idea of what can we do to become the world's home for furniture and design? And that became our ambitious, impactful mission statement. So, by 2030, we will increase year-round economic opportunities for High Point residents by becoming the world's home for furniture and design. And next, I'll go over kind of the schedule, and then we'll dive into parts of this a little bit, a little bit in more detail. So, last fall, we embarked on that and created that aim statement and refined it through a lot of work on the team, some research work that we did comparing ourselves to other cities. Really just looked at kind of, it was kind of like you're in a college class, kind of the literature review of what we were aiming to do. No pun. And then in January, we talked about problem framing. So, you're really honing in on what our problem was and how we were going to define it and face it. And in February, March, we had design research in synthesis. In April and May, we had ideation sessions. So, we brought in a number of stakeholders from around the city. And we have a slide later that shows all the stakeholders that we engaged. But it was very intentional to get a really wide swath of folks in High Point, and not just furniture and design-related, but, you know, across the board, to get folks here to give us their wild ideas. At that point, we were just looking for ideas. We weren't judging the ideas, I guess, at that point. And then in June, we did a prototyping sessions, again, bringing in a lot of different stakeholders. And so, just recently, we were talking about the scaling of it, the portfolio, and how will we implement the ideas that kind of rose to the top. Next is Debbie.
So, I'm Debbie. So, to kick off, we started with the research phase of the project. We targeted three main groups within the community, which were the business, property owners, creatives, and the residents.
So, that way, people listening online can hear us. Thank you, Debbie.
Of course, sure.
No problem. Thank you.
That's great. I can actually say a little better. So, we targeted the three main groups within the community, and our focus was on the business, property owners, creatives, and residents. And then through these, through these processes, we interviewed over 18 different groups of people, had 10 different sources that we reached out to for information, and then, of course, attended 40-plus structured hours of either meetings, classes, and synthesis. And then for the next stage of that, we basically reframed a problem statement. The problem that we found is that High Point needs a shared vision for how to expand the year-round economic impact of design and the furniture market in the community. Not having the shared vision is a problem for residents, city leaders, and businesses as it affects economic growth, city planning, and the ability to attract and retain creative talent to High Point. And we found that this is a problem because we missed the opportunity to provide a vibrant and connected city that entices current residents to champion our identity while attracting more economic growth. And this led us into the next phase of the project, which was our ideation sessions. So, the core team hosted three separate ideation sessions. The participants included residents, youth, and representatives from the art and design community of High Point. The participants were encouraged to think big during this time. From the sessions, we had 60 idea themes that were established after sorting through hundreds of ideas. The core team reviewed these themes, and we prioritized them based on potential impact, resources, and the potential timeline for implementation. Now, let me see if I can do this. Oh, yay. Okay. So, following the prioritization, we had three concepts that we decided to move forward. And these included a design competition, which included ideas about design competitions, neighborhood, identity, and hosting an arts and music festival and showcase. The next idea was a creative hub. We combined ideas about creating the creatives' co-retailing space, a design hub to support career exploration, and a design-specific coworking space. The last of which was the public art displays and ideas related to public creativity, permanent art crawls, murals around the city. After that, we did some prototyping. So, after the ideation, we did. Following that and prioritization, the next phase in the track was prototyping. It's, prototyping is creating a tangible representation of the model or idea at any fidelity. The purpose of this phase was to bring all of our ideas to life. The portion of this process included the community stakeholders to provide feedback early on how this would or would not meet their needs. We wanted the positive and the negative. This step involved the use of idea cards, which each concept, to thoroughly develop the ideas to ensure that all the aspects of this were thoroughly considered during this process.
So, due to time and resource constraints within the program itself, we focused on prototyping two of these ideas, the first of which was an arts and design competition. And for this first session, we really wanted to focus on big-picture details. So, we looked at the format of the competition itself. Who would participate? Is there buy-in from the communities? Is something that they really want? How can it be accessible, and what's the scale of the event? And so, as Melanie mentioned, here are some examples of the idea cards that we used for our first session. And the goal of these was to prompt those conversations and start that feedback process so we could learn what participants liked, what they didn't like, and what they cared about. The two main takeaways we learned here is that the word "design competition" didn't really resonate with the creative community and the residents here in High Point. They liked the idea of a competitive element, but they didn't want that to be the event. They wanted it to be more of a celebration. And they also wanted a word that wasn't necessarily designed, something that would encompass more than what you think of when you think of traditional design fields. So, that led us into our second session, which focused on a festival. And for this, we were looking on nailing down those finer details. So, logistics, how we would market the event, what would actually take place at the event, and then any comparable events that we could dig into and draw inspiration from. So, on the bottom here is an example of one of the prompts we used. So, instead of idea cards, we had more visual components to spark that feedback. And this tried to represent what we saw the festival containing. So, some hands-on activities, that music component, food trucks, things of that nature. And then you can see that they were invited to also give us feedback on sticky notes that they could place, so that we got their feedback in their own words. And they also provided feedback on things like location and on how we might market this event and really reach the creatives we're aiming to draw out. What we learned from this is that while they liked the celebratory element, they wanted it to be more focused on hands-on education, experiential learning. And so, we re-titled this as a showcase in order to celebrate art and draw on not only the community, but also fellow creatives that could come in and learn these crafts. And it focuses less on retail and more on that experiential phase. And so, what we're currently doing is synthesizing this feedback and continuing to build those partnerships, as well as focusing on the creative aspect that participants really enjoyed because it was more encompassing than design and allowed for greater inclusion of that larger community. Okay, the second concept that we prototyped was the creative hub. And we started again with the first session being utilizing idea cards. And these are the various concepts that we discussed with our creative community here in High Point. We started out with just really, how would you define a general creative hub? And then we went from there, looking at disciplines, looking at types of equipment we would need, what types of spaces they would want within this creative hub, which led then to staff working through a business model map. And so, with the business model map, we looked at things, including the value proposition, which is really looking at what the creative community's interests were. We looked at our customers. So, who would they be? How would we interact with them? How would we reach them? We discussed various kind of budget matters as far as what expenditures would we realize if we had a creative hub? What revenues would we realize if we had a creative hub? Just to kind of figure out some details there. And then we discussed what next steps would need to occur for it to be a successful creative hub, as well as what resources and what partners would we need? And so, our second phase or portion of our prototyping session included reviewing these worksheets with a couple of bigger stakeholders within our creative community, really having a conversation and trying to build a coalition around this idea.
And for the third one, we had permanent public art displays. It was not one of the top two that moved on for prototype or ideation. However, we felt like there was a lot of similarity there. It's kind of going through fruit and opportunity to just kind of connect it to the other two ideas. It was very similar and practical to those ideas. So, we are showing our work here. As you see, we're starting to develop the quantitative and qualitative goals, key learning questions, impact goals, a timeline, and evaluation mechanism. One of the benefit to this idea is there's already a lot of best practices policies kind of in place that we can look through or learn from other cities and kind of mimic those models a little bit. For implementation, we talked about next steps, collaborators, stakeholders, resources, potential barriers and strategy, the timeline, milestones, sorry, and then the strategy. For those partners, we talked about some of the local partners that we have worked with for the ideation sessions, who we can bring in for that to assist us with establishing some of the processes that we need in place. Some of the barriers, obviously, cost. The approval process, kind of case by case right now, but could establish something that's a little more fine, defined. And then, resources, we have obviously real estate and property to do so. Timelines, we are still trying to work through and establish those. But by the end of the year, hopefully establishing a roundtable for that, identifying funds by the next fiscal year, in order to do so. And then education opportunities. So, one of the great things is when we did meet with people for these sessions, everybody tied in the education opportunity. Everybody wanted to see the youth engagement. So, we think through these two ideas, two main ideas that were prototyped, along with this last piece that was the permanent art display. We think, obviously, you get the youth engagement, you get some of the educational opportunities through all three. But the biggest thing is the chance to support and inspire that next generation of creatives.
Before I read this entire list of local partners, I would be remiss if I didn't call out the Center for Public Impact, which is the group that Harvard and Bloomberg hired to guide us through this process. So, they took their decades of experience and helped us in every step of this. But you can see from the list of community partners that we engaged, we weren't just narrowly focused on furniture or design or the creative community. We were really trying to reach that broad base of community groups. And we had great feedback from everybody. You know, when you go through this type of process, you expect to hear some good, you expect to hear some bad. But I think almost every group and every person that we engaged with, they were very positive. They were very surprised that a group from the city was kind of asking these questions or going through this process. We came at it with, I think, open minds and open hearts. And so, I think that resonated with folks in the community. One of the residents at one of the ideation sessions, you know, he said, "I've never been in a group like this and asked these type of questions. They ask my opinion." And so, he felt very valued, I think, from that. So, you can see from this group that we were really trying to cast a white net. And so, kind of our next steps and how do we keep these ideas alive and how do we keep these projects moving? Obviously, we need to prioritize the projects that we identified. We acknowledge upfront that there are a lot of groups that are working on these type of projects already. And one of the things that we really kind of need to do is recruit that team of strategic partners to work on each of these three, bring those ideas together, you know, identify events that have already happened in the city. They have similarities. Or identify events that happened in other cities and other communities that have been successful, and bring those ideas to bear, to make our events and our ideas successful. And then, obviously important, we have to find resources, and we have to find funding streams in able to do this important work. I believe that is the end of the presentation. We'll be happy to go into more detail or take any questions or comments that the council may have.
Awesome. Thank you. Are there any questions, council, after the presentation, or any comments? Yes, sir, Councilwoman Holland. So, we're talking about art music festival, the Culinary Festival. I was kind of biased about that. I mean, talking to folks who have put on festivals and figuring out all the logistics, because, I mean, the Culinary Festival is like a serious operation. We start on Tuesday, and there's the Folk Festival, following week. They have multiple stages. So, I think talking to those groups can really learn a lot. I just, I did most of our festivals. So, you can learn some hard lessons before you actually learn the mineral art, because we've learned quite a few on the Culinary Festival. And the Easter Music Festival is another one. Sort of take some insights from those folks as we move forward.
If I could say, we had the chance to discuss this a week ago. And I've got more thoughts about this, but I just want to mention to your point, we did talk a little bit about the festival and how there's some folks doing some current festivals that we may be able to collaborate with. And I know that's what this team is having discussions with certain partners about. There's some where there could be natural alignment, especially as they look to expand what they're doing with some of their events. So, that way, it's, to your point, not having to learn some of those hard lessons all over again, but enhance what some people already have. Those shared resources will probably be as efficient. But I agree with your point there.
Any other thoughts?
Question. My quick math tells me about 8% or so of those entities were nonprofits. Is this initiative intended to be self-sustaining or is it going to be something that we will be funding moving forward?
No, I think, I think we kind of made it clear that this is not something that the city would be able to fund 100%. There may be some participation. But I think that's why it's so important that we continue to identify and cultivate the relationships with the groups listed here, and groups that aren't listed here, groups that may not even be at the forefront at this point. And that's why I kind of mentioned that there are, you know, there are efforts going on right now in all three of these spaces that we may be able to collaborate with and really bring to bear just a very pot of resources to fund these ideas.
Okay, and then one follow-up question. With the other cities that you've been collaborating with, are there any examples of any communities where this arts-type thing is a major economic driver?
I think from our ideation sessions, I think there are, there were a number of different events that are happening in different cities. The one that really resonates is less of an art, but more of like a furniture. And remind me, actually, what's the city in Ohio, I believe? Are you aware of Indiana?
Columbus, Indiana.
Columbus, Indiana.
Columbus, Indiana.
Columbus, Indiana. It has kind of a design competition and expo that they built it as an economic kind of development drive. There was also a city in a region in Texas that has a big antiques fair that was highlighted as potentially something. When we were more on a furniture, you know, bent and less on just pure arts and design. So, there are a number of cities that we can point to as resources and share ideas with.
Very good. Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Well, I've got a comment.
Yes, ma'am.
I just want to tell each and every one of y'all, thank y'all so much because I know that it takes a lot of time to do this kind of work. And this is clearly one of the priorities of this council is to really emphasize art and design year-round. And so, all your work is really appreciated, appreciated, and we'll be able to utilize that to hopefully move forward. So, thank you so much.
I'd say London actually has a week. They call it like open neighborhood. I'd say London actually has a week, they call it like Open Neighborhoods or something like that, since September, where you can see, it's really about architecture and engineering and all that sort of stuff, things that aren't normally open to the public, you can get tours and it's really, I'll send you the link, it was really interesting. I just learned about it the other day.
And Art Bet, have you ever heard of Art Bet, that's so in Miami? That's a big, huge, it's going to be in December. That's a huge three-day.
That was one of the examples.
Yeah, okay.
And one of the things that was mentioned was that even, you know, you think Miami, you think it's got to be a gigantic thing, but it's actually limited to just like one block. So it's not, it's not a really massive.
Yeah, the economic development, that's happened in areas of, always from Miami. So we see it firsthand. The Windward thing is amazing. Yeah, it's unbelievable impact, not just economic, but also in housing and all kinds of things. Let's break this boundary.
Any other thoughts, questions, anything to add to discussion? I want to echo what was said as appreciation to staff. You all taking time over this past year to dig in has meant so much to me personally. I can tell you, and some of y'all have heard me speak about this, you know, we were sitting in that room in New York City and everyone had to pick their big challenge that they're sitting near to work on. And, you know, someone talked about flooding, another person talked about issues with bulk collection, someone else had like a pest issue, very serious things, right? And then when I, like, it was time for me to share that our challenge was realizing some of our greatest potential as the world's Mecca for creativity and design and arts, and the fact that people from all over the world come to High Point to be inspired. What we create in High Point changes the world. So our challenge is how to live into that in the best way possible, with year-round activity that has economic benefits, with all types of added advantages and quality of life enhancements for our people. And after I said it, every mayor in the room from New Zealand and Cali and Italy and all these places said, "Can we change our challenge?" They didn't want to talk about rats and bulk collection. No offense, Melanie. They didn't want to talk, they wanted to switch real quick, because we had a really fun one. And that's a credit too to Madam Manager. I remember we were sitting down, trying to figure out like which challenge, because we've got a number of challenges, y'all, no doubt. But we felt that, for example, I think housing was one we thought about taking into that conversation. But we felt there were some big things that we were really putting some muscle behind already with housing. And that if we were going to try to figure something out, we really didn't have anything concrete around this. We needed to figure something that we could put some muscle behind. So I love where this landed, because it's things that feel tangible, that feel realistic. I can say this, as a result of that work, I can't remember which one of you all said in your presentation, but some of the private folks have been so inspired by it that people right now at this moment are mobilizing private dollars to invest in the city strictly because of the city's commitment to this conversation. And, and I say this, I thought about whether I should say this or not, which probably means I shouldn't say it, but I'm gonna say it. I, in light of last fall, it was very unfortunate what happened to Asheville. And there's a lot of creatives who lost a lot of their livelihood and work at that time. And while they're rebuilding there, they found a second home in High Point, because High Point has embraced them as creatives, designers, and makers to help them do their arts and their craft, like the things that they sell. A number of them were here at this last market selling, and now they've got active, active things happening here. And some of them are looking at High Point in terms of relocation and so on and so forth. And so there are just real ramifications. I mean, you talked about what you all saw there in Miami in terms of all the economic impact, what it did to transform communities there in terms of people moving in and visiting and so on and so forth. And so I just think the potential is really endless around this. Some of our biggest, most critical stakeholders, you can look at that screen, you know, I mean, you tell me the city's biggest economic engines, and I'm gonna tell you, they're up on that screen right now. And they've been at the table in discussions with us because they believe in what this idea is too. And so the city being the leader and the convenor in this way means a ton. It doesn't mean that we have to be the ones to prop it up with tax dollars, but we can give it credence, we can give it validity, we can give it some life. And that indeed is what this team of staff members has done. And so appreciation on behalf of all High Pointers for what y'all are doing with this. Carla, you did so good, it got you a job with the city of High Point. Wait until the next challenge, it's gonna get you a promotion.
If I can make one more comment?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm super glad to see High Point University on that list as well. I just got back from Savannah last week, but anyway. So SCAD's kind of all over Savannah. And so a lot of old buildings are now kind of utilized for like some studios and stuff. And I think that getting the university involved, I was even, you know, they call it SCAD, I said, "We could be HPAD," but I don't know if that sounds like it. I don't need to go with that, but anyway. But I love that, because I think that our university has a great potential to kind of help us move that needle forward, so, yeah.
Yeah.
I think there also, thinking about these three ideas, we talked about how it can help drive the economy here in High Point, but I also think that there are components of this that people can take ownership over and own and make it their own, as the city is starting to just put the idea out there and be the catalyst behind this. But one of the ideas that came out of this too is that when we're talking about public art, we have public art that's, that's visible in our community now. But being able to have an independent group that actually thinks through where that needs to go, what it looks like, because art is very much into the eyes, in the eye of the holder. And in a lot of cities, you do have independent arts groups that are selecting those pieces, they're trying to reach different segments of the community so that culturally, it's representative of the entire community in terms of the types of art that's placed in the community. And a lot of times, it's best for outside agencies and non-local government to step into that space and to curate that art that's in your community. I think the other piece, and this was a conversation with Councilmember Cook, before we actually got through all these ideas and I knew what the three ideas were in this project, that we had some conversations about being able to build upon the idea of a festival that ties in education, how, from a perspective of growing the next generation of makers and tying our youth to the creative market here so that they can understand how careers in furniture and manufacturing and building are right here in High Point, but when do you start to engage that segment of the population? And how does that then leverage into that next generation of workers that feel like, "I can make it here," and I may not be communicating our conversation quite succinctly, but it was really focused on bringing that continuum of helping people to understand the careers that are associated with our furniture market here and tying them into that where they have that sense of ownership, where they feel like, "Hey, I know something about this." Market makes sense to them in a way, and then they can build their career or business around that. So I think that although we were not, I was not directly involved in these conversations with the team and I hadn't seen these things yet, it was tracking right online with some other conversations that we were having and also what this council had asked us to do as part of that strategic plan priority of how do we put the ideas out there and then start to coalesce groups around making this happen? So we'll have to continue to flush that out a little bit. But I do think that we're definitely headed on the right path based on the community partners that were there, excited and willing to participate in this process.
Nice. Councilmember Cook, did you want to add something?
Well, I was just gonna add to that, because I was inspired with some of the work that I've done with Councilmember Peters and working with a local furniture maker, designer maker, that I was like, "Well, why would I have ever come here or met this person or know what they do or see this as just a normal member of the public?" And so I think about kids, when you say, "Oh, you could go work at so-and-so factory." That just sounds like a kind of large idea that they may not be able to place what that is, what they do, what they could create. And so I was trying to brainstorm some ways that we could bring that out into the street so that they could see it live in person, perhaps participate in it, and feel like a little bit more connected to the process than just kind of an ubiquitous idea of a factory job somewhere.
Any final comments or anything on this? Okay. That will say thank you. And if there's no other business, is there a motion to adjourn?
To me.
Second. Motion made by Councilmember Peters, second by Councilmember Andrew. Any discussion on the motion? Hey, now, all those affairs, we signify by saying aye. Aye. Any against? The ayes have it, and that motion passes. We are adjourned. Thank you.